A diligence to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all. It's somebody online, somebody Zooming, Channel 13.
Laura, you all set with attendance?
Yes.
Is Jody actually on Zoom?
Jody is on Zoom, yes. Adjustments to the agenda. Holly.
I would like to make a motion that we move public comment to the end of the meeting and we limit it to two minutes per comment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Phoebe. We have a policy in place that gives them three minutes, and if the public wishes to discuss the issue at hand, shouldn't we hear what they have to say before any of the motion? If we put it at the very end, then we don't get to hear all the voices, and that includes all the sides and any neutral discussion. I feel that's wildly inappropriate. Thank you.
We're doing it that way because we have an attorney who's on standby and Billy.
That still doesn't take precedence over public comment and the right of the public to make their comments before we make any decisions. I know it's costing money, but this whole thing's costing us money.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on the table to move-
She's ignoring you.
No, she didn't see me. It's okay. Oh, sorry. Sorry. I understand we have a lawyer on standby, but what if we met with the lawyer first, then heard public comment? Then we still get the lawyer, we still hear what they have to say, then we can hear what the public has to say. That way, we don't keep the lawyer waiting, we save ourselves some money that way, and we also hear all the voices before we make our vote. I mean, that makes sense to me. I'm okay with that adjustment.
That's what I was thinking. Let's recognize speakers.
We have-
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mason. I didn't see you.
I'm just curious what- I know we have a lawyer on standby. I'm just, I believe the public has a right to comment on anything that we as a board decide on before we do so. As a publicly elected body, we are there, we are here as servants of our people who elect us. So how would, I just don't understand how democratically that fits with what we're charged with doing if we're making, if we're having discussions with our lawyers and making decisions before hearing from everyone.
Shh. We have a motion on the table right now.
I would agree. I think we need to listen to the public first.
Holly, do you want to rescind your motion? Or do you want us to vote? Okay. All those in favor of moving the public comments to the end?
Point of order. Do we have a second on the motion? Okay. Thank you.
We have a second, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Heather Harnish? Hewish, I'm sorry.
Hello. My name is Heather Harnish Hewish. I'm an English teacher at Spruce Mountain High School, but I'm speaking to you tonight as the advisor for our school's GSTA, which stands for Gender, Sexuality, and Trans Alliance. We're the group for our school's LGBTQ students. I want to appeal to you tonight to rescind policy ACDC, coordination of federal and state law, that you recently adopted. Are you aware that caring for our LGBTQ students and making them feel accepted is actually suicide prevention? I will now read you some statistics from the Trevor Project, an LGBTQ advocacy organization that has a 24-by-7 lifeline for LGBTQ youth, providing crisis intervention, suicide prevention, and services like Trevor Chat and Trevor Text. Suicide is the second-leading cause of death among young people aged 10 to 24. LGBTQ youth seriously contemplate suicide at almost three times the rate of heterosexual youth. LGBTQ youth are almost five times as likely to have attempted suicide compared to heterosexual youth. Of all the suicide attempts made by youth, LGBTQ youth suicide attempts were almost five times as likely to require medical treatment than those of heterosexual youth. Suicide attempts by LGBTQ youth and questioning youth are four to six times more likely to result in injury, poisoning, or overdose that requires treatment from a doctor or nurse compared to their straight peers. In a national study, 40% of transgender students, I'm going to repeat that, transgender students, reported having made suicide attempts. 92% of these individuals reported having attempted suicide before the age of 25. LGBTQ youth who come from highly rejecting families are 8.4 times as likely to have attempted suicide as LGBTQ peers who reported no or low levels of family rejection. One out of six students nationwide, grades nine to 12, seriously considered suicide in the past year. Each episode of LGBTQ victimization, such as physical or verbal harassment or abuse, increases the likelihood of self-harming behavior by two and a half times on average. Now, imagine how policy ACDC makes our LGBTQ students feel about whether they are welcome in the Spruce Mountain School District. Please rescind this awful policy to protect our kids.
Mike Soboleski.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Chairperson Willett and members of the board. I am State Representative Mike Soboleski, and I'm pleased to report that a number of Maine schools are moving in the right direction, realigning their athletic and instructional policies with federal Title IX standards and refocusing on core academics. Across the country, in states like Idaho, Mississippi, and Tennessee have passed laws that restrict transgender girls, biological boys, from participating in girl sports, citing Title IX's definition of biological sex. Florida, Iowa, and Missouri are scaling back standalone social-emotional learning modules, which many parents and educators have found divisive, in favor of proven academic instructions. Here in Maine, several districts, as many as eight, are taking meaningful steps to align with federal law, including Falmouth, Hodgston, Spruce Mountain here, Bayleville. These actions reflect a growing understanding: federal law supersedes state law under the supremacy clause of the United States Constitution. The Maine Human Rights Act cannot override a federal mandate. If your counsel is advising you otherwise, I recommend you seek another opinion. Recently, the DOJ formally requested the MPA turn over complete rosters, including student names and school affiliations of every boys' and girls' sports team, over the past two years. Their argument is clear, that without consistent, biologically-based eligibility standards, female athletes may face unfair competition and potential safety risks. Maine leaders and the MPA declined that request, citing serious privacy concerns. While the Maine Human Rights Act offers additional nondiscrimination protections, the supremacy clause makes clear that federal Title IX requirements prevail in any conflict. The MPA has clarified that the Maine Human Rights Act does not include mandates for athletics or locker rooms. The only legal question before the U.S. District Court of the District of Maine is whether federal Title IX preempts state law. In March, the HHS Office of the Civil Rights found that the Maine DOE, and MPA, and Greeley High School in violation of Title IX for allowing males in girl sports and private spaces. A temporary restraining order blocking DOJ funding cuts while the preemption issue is decided is ongoing, and the case itself is ongoing. Meanwhile, several school boards across Maine are moving away from separate SEL modules and returning to proven instructional techniques. These steps bring clarity, comply with federal mandates, and ensure our policies protect every student's privacy, safety, and educational success. And let me say in closing, please don't be bullied. That's what's happening right now. They're trying to, the Maine Human Rights Commission is trying to bully you. Please, hold the line, stay on course. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ann Wetherby.
Good evening. First, just a piece of clarification. It is an executive order, not federal law. It's state law that we're in violation of. I'm Ann Wetherby. I am from Jay. I am sad and disappointed, but not surprised to find that RSU 73 is in the position it is now. When school board members voted to violate state law, you were warned by your district attorneys, our superintendent, fellow board members, and numerous community members that the policy would lead to a lawsuit. Now you're asking the town of Livermore, Livermore Falls, and Jay to have another set of lawyers to defend your agenda. I am against this policy in so many, for so many reasons, which I and many others have expressed repeatedly. But tonight, I'm offering you a new one. As a taxpayer whose property taxes have increased 59%, I feel that that money could go to much better use than my town paying for more legal advice or to settle a lawsuit for violating state law, not federal law. I do not, I do want to thank the board members, who have been voices of reason, and all the community members who have tried to help this board make decisions in the best interests of students and towns, and I hope that your common sense and compassion will prevail today. And I am not bullying.
Jane Costa.
Jane Costa, Jay, taxpayer. The last time I was here, I tried to explain how Maine RSUs fall under the jurisdiction of state and local laws. That has been the case since 1820, when we became a state. Maine public schools are funded mostly by the state of Maine, up to 55%, and then most of the rest comes from the local taxpayers, in this case, the three towns, who own all of this. The taxpayers of the three towns actually own the RSU. We own the property, everything that's in it, and in conjunction with the state Department of Education laws. So we govern the local infrastructure, and the state is the one who provides the guidance for the laws. It has always been state jurisdiction. This is not federal property. And again, the legislature makes the laws, and the legislature changes the laws. So right now, this is in the courts. There's no reason to create a policy for something that actually hasn't come up yet. It hasn't been decided yet. In fact, before January 2025, I don't recall ever hearing about any problems in our school district when it comes to Title IX. I don't even think most of the students and people in the area even knew what Title IX was. And then all of a sudden, January 2025 comes, and everyone's talking about Title IX. So you have to ask yourself, why is that? Do we actually even have a problem with Title IX? Have there been any complaints? Have there been any investigations about this? No! It seems as though a problem has been created, has been manufactured, and that's not right, because it's dragged in all kinds of problems with the kids. And we shouldn't be doing that. We should not be preempting the legal process. It's due process. This is in the courts right now. The courts will eventually make their decision, and then the state of Maine will let us know, as public schools, how we should proceed. It's very simple. This is how our government works, okay? It's been working this way for a long time, and I don't understand why you would want to preempt or somehow get around something and just let the process work itself out. Regardless of whether you personally agree with this, for your political reasons or your religious reasons, is irrelevant. When you come in here, you are a public oath servant. You are here to follow the law-
Thank you, Ms. Costa.
-and keep your personal opinions to yourself. That's all I want to say. Just follow the law and let this ride out. Please rescind policy ACDC.
Lynn Willett.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Lynn Willett. I'm a resident of Jay. Civil rights are personal rights that protect individuals and guarantee equal treatment and protection under the law. They are legal entitlements created by laws that ensure equal treatment and protection from discrimination. Civil rights legislation has outlawed discrimination based on specific classes, including race, color, ancestry, national origin, sex, sexual orientation and gender identity, physical or mental disability, religion, and age. I contend that the RSU 73 school board has violated the civil rights of transgender students in RSU 73 by disallowing use of bathroom and locker room facilities and participation on school-sponsored teams that align with their gender identity. To change a law, you can propose a new bill through a legislator, support an existing bill, start an initiative or referendum, or gather signatures for a referendum. The processes that establish laws are complex, yet they must be utilized to establish, to change, or repeal laws. This is a preferable approach over attempting to change laws by decree or by violation. If you believe that change is necessary, choose a legal process. Rescind the ACDC policy changes and look at the issue again. Follow the law.
Steve Bien.
Steve Bien, resident of Jay. I'm speaking for the rescission of this ACDC policy. Tonight, I want to address something that should be at the core of every school board member's work, that is, making responsible decisions that meet the needs of our students while respecting what this community can realistically afford. Several board members who voted for the policy now at the center of this lawsuit campaigned on preventing waste, controlling spending, and protecting taxpayers. That was your message. That was your brand. And yet, here we are, watching those same individuals support a completely unnecessary and legally unsound policy that has now put our district squarely in the path of a lawsuit that will, almost certainly, we will lose. You cannot run on fiscal responsibility and then push policies that invite expensive litigation. You cannot say you're here to protect students and taxpayers while endorsing actions that siphon money away from classrooms into lawyers' pockets. This is not complicated. It is cause and effect. If you knowingly pass a policy that violates state law, you will get sued. And when you get sued, the district will spend money, and money that is money that will not be spent on students. Right now, we have students who need academic support, safe facilities, updated materials, qualified staff, and mental health resources. We have families facing housing instability and food insecurity. These are real unmet needs. And instead of investing our limited resources into meeting those needs, we are preparing to pour money into defending a policy that your own legal counsel clearly and repeatedly warned was indefensible. That is not responsible governance, that is not fiscal stewardship, and that is not why the community elected you. We don't expect perfection, but we do expect accountability. When you knowingly pass a policy that jeopardizes our budget and therefore our students' well-being because it aligns with a personal or political preference rather than sound legal or financial judgment, that is not leadership, that is negligence. And let me be clear, this community will not support leaders who put political posturing over student welfare or who create expensive problems and then expect taxpayers to foot the bill. What we will support are school board members who remember why they are here, to support students, not lawsuits, to fund education, not litigation, to make responsible decisions, not reckless ones. If certain board members cannot or will not put students' needs first, then the community is prepared to support candidates who will. Our students deserve better, our taxpayers deserve better, and our district deserves leaders who take their responsibilities seriously. Thanks.
Lynda Dean.
Good evening. My name is Lynda Dean from Livermore. The Maine Human Rights Commission did not sue RSU 73 by accident or for bullying. They sued because this board adopted a policy that violates Maine civil rights law. This is not a political disagreement, it's a civil rights violation, and the commission is required to act when a district discriminates. Tonight's agenda makes something very clear. You must decide whether to rescind this policy and whether to hire new legal counsel. The only reason that question is before you is because your current legal counsel refused to bless an unlawful policy. They warned it conflicted with Maine law and advised you to wait for the courts. You ignored that advice. That decision didn't just break the law, it broke your own board ethics policy, which requires acting in students' best interests, following legal guidance, and avoiding foreseeable harm. You also took an oath to uphold Maine law, not the beliefs of outside groups, not national talking points, and not a federal executive order, which is not a law and cannot override the Maine Human Rights Act. Yet this board adopted policy ACDC based on the executive order and treated Maine civil rights protections as optional. That was never permissible, and it is exactly why we're being sued. And here is the most important question: who will pay the bill for this? Not the out-of-state groups who wrote the policy, not PRI, whose talking points were read into the record, not the organizations that claimed their language would keep you out of trouble. The taxpayers of Jay, Livermore, and Livermore Falls will pay. Our community will pay, and our students will pay. The Maine Human Rights Commission has already said the lawsuit will be dropped if this board rescends a policy. Every day you refuse, the financial cost grows, and the burden on this district gets heavier. You can end this tonight. Rescind the policy, honor the oath you took, follow your ethical and legal obligations, stop putting this district at legal and financial risk, and most importantly, do what every student at Spruce Mountain deserves: create a school where they can learn, belong, and become their best selves. Thank you.
I'm looking for a motion to either rescind or leave in place policy ACDC, coordination of federal and state law. Do I have a-
Discussion.
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear what you said. If it was rescind or accept, I couldn't hear, it wasn't in the mic.
The motion on the table is to leave ACDC in place. Discussion. Elaine.
Thank you. You know how I feel on this. I'm against breaking the law. We've done that. Some people have gone against their oath of office. I'd like to know from you, Sheri, whether, where we stand right now in terms of legal expenditure regarding board expenses. To this date, I know we have to be way above our average.
I don't have the exact figure, but I think it's around $35,000 that we've spent so far this year.
$35,000, if you didn't hear that.
But that's not necessarily for this issue. That's what, that's what we've spent so far.
That's, I'm asking related to school board issues.
School board issues?
Yes.
Yeah, probably about $35,000, not related to necessarily ACDC.
Right. But, I mean, that is investigations and all kinds of other things that we've undergone. I know that this money is coming out of our student's school budget, the one we work on very hard each year to provide for our students, for our facilities, for our maintenance, for things that need to be done, for their education, for the professionals we hire, for the buses we keep on the road, the bus drivers, the ed techs. This keeping of this policy, as it's written, puts us at great legal risk. More importantly, for every taxpayer in the three towns, it puts them at risk. Our tax dollars go- Our tax dollars go to all of this legal advice.
Actually, Elaine, if I can just speak--
No, when I'm done, you can.
I was just going to tell you about the funding that it's not going to cost.
Well, I guess you'll have to say that when I'm done. Right now, our budget is funded by these three towns. Putting that number at risk when many of you have made it public, whether you were on the board or not, that you think our budget's too high and you want to cut it, I find that just ridiculous. And I really don't, if we are being funded by, and you'll explain that, Sheri, I'm sure, if this legal action is being funded by an outside group, wow, I question that as well. We are ruling for our district and the money and the taxpayers within it. I don't see an outside group being proper as funding anything for us that we are responsible for. We are responsible for this and our taxpayers. We don't need outside money. All we have to do is follow the law. And keeping ACDC as it is written now and not choosing to revert to our prior policy, which was within the limits of the law, and letting the federal courts fight this, as you're well aware of, as was advised legally, is just wasteful and knowingly illegal. I totally disagree with this motion, with this policy. And we've heard overwhelmingly from public comments that the majority in our community, in our community, we have heard publicly tonight that they're not in favor of this. So I urge you to vote no. I know some of you won't, but I'm going to stick with my oath of office, stand for state of Maine law, and I will not vote in favor of this.
So Title IX is a federal law that was put in place in 1972, which is the law that we're going by. We do have a grant that is being offered, our lawyers, to help fund this suit.
By whom?
The Alliance Defending Freedom.
Which is funded by whom?
It's a federal group.
Yeah, and who are they funded by?
Why does that matter?
I'd like to know where the money's coming from. Is it coming from this community? Is it coming from our state?
They could be. It could be, because anybody can, I have contributed to the Alliance Defending Freedom.
I'm sure you have.
It--
Oh, you weren't recognized. You were not recognized by the chair.
Does anybody else have any comments before we vote?
Um, yeah, sorry, having difficulty here. Based on the information that you just said, I just have a couple of quick questions, if that's okay, to make sure that we have all of the information when making a vote. You said that we're being offered a grant to cover all of the legal expenses that you know will happen if we continue with this. Does that cover all eight of the schools? Currently, only four that are. And if so, when were you given this information? Was this right before the meeting, or were we left out of it for any particular reason?
I got the information this morning that there was, the funding was going to be made available. It is being made available to all of the districts that are currently being sued.
The money is being made available, so it's not guaranteed. If they get back, they can still back out. We haven't signed up. We haven't said, yes, we're definitely doing this. So basically, we're being paid to vote to keep it. That's what the grant means, because if we do not accept the grant, that's fine.
The grant doesn't go through us. So our attorneys, if we decide to go with a certain set of attorneys, will apply for a grant.
If we apply for a specific attorney, so did they pick the attorney? Okay, so if the attorney that we're seeing tonight isn't qualifying for the grant, does that put us at more financial risk? I'm just trying to understand, Sheri. I'm not trying to, like, gotcha or anything. I just want to understand.
I had a Zoom call with the other districts that are involved in the lawsuit, and we talked about possible attorneys, whether the other districts were going to fight, whether they weren't going to fight. And so the attorney that we are going to be talking about a little bit later is that attorney that we spoke with last, he, well, you weren't on the board then, but Mr. Balzachi of C. Smith Trial Lawyers.
So can you, can you tell me if I'm misunderstanding? So we, so there are attorneys that are going to apply for a grant if we go with them, okay? So are they applying on behalf of the school?
They'll be applying on behalf of all of the schools. If any of the schools decide to go with this attorney, or any attorney can apply for this grant.
Okay, so would, so, so what, does that amount, does the amount, does that need to be accepted by being their client? Are we entitled to that money? Or does that need to come to the board for approval as an independent? Like, does that money, because we're accepting it because we are a public organization, because we are accepting funds on behalf of a public organization, does that, I know, there's a certain threshold probably, and I'm sure it's very much that they're applying for, does that need to come to us as a board because we're a separate entity? We are a client of them, but we are not, we need to still accept the funds as a public entity.
Yes. That I don't know where the money is not going directly through us, Mason. I'm not sure, but I will check with the attorney.
Thank you.
First of all, it's not my intention to end up on the eight o'clock or nine o'clock, ten o'clock news tonight. But we've been publicly challenged to defend positions, and I've remained silent up until this point in time. I'm torn emotionally, legally, financially, on the direction this policy could take us. I've lived with Title IX over 50 years, and I've seen what it has done to emancipate women and to provide the spaces for them so they can perform, whether it's a fraternal organization or civic organization, or open up themselves to fair competition. From where I'm standing, this policy wants us to protect girls by keeping girls' sports for girls. We've seen the Olympics. We've seen men's divisions and women's divisions. And the men's competition compares nothing to the women's competition, and most women will say that they cannot compete against a man. A transgender person who identifies as a woman is still putting the girls in an awkward position. And who's defending the girls' position where they have to accept competition against women who aren't women? That's about all I've got to say. I wish I had better words to express things, but I think women's sports should be for women. And I hear the public comments here. I understand your positions, and I know they're deeply held. But I've seen positions of people in the community that don't support that position and do support the position of girls' sports for girls. Thank you.
We have a motion on the table to not rescind ACDC. Can I get a roll call, Laura?
Absolutely. Holly. I'd like to follow up on what Mason said. Do we have to vote as a board to accept this outside funding for this legal services? Where do we stand legally on that? Any funding that we get, I look at Scott, and he says he has no idea. I would think we would have to vote as a board to accept outside, any outside funding of our legal services.
And if that happens--
Okay, so we will take a vote on that.
Is that funding guaranteed? I know you said that the lawyers will apply for it. To me, that doesn't sound guaranteed. Is it guaranteed once they apply for it?
Well, nothing, nothing in life is guaranteed. But in addition to that, the Maine education initiative is also setting up a school board defense fund. So I'm 98% sure that funding will be available.
Is there any other information about outside sources that are funding this movement that we should know about? You seem to be informed, and perhaps we all need to be informed.
You know what I know now.
Now, thank you.
I know, I sound like a broken record today. Because it's a grant, most grants have a stipulated amount. When that amount is maxed out, because lawyers are very expensive, as we all know, then it goes back to the taxpayers. Or do we keep applying for the grants over and over and over again and hope that the funding is available? 98% leaves 2% chance that the taxpayers who have kids that can't afford sneakers, and we had a fundraiser for it, who, we have schools asking for snow clothes right now. We have a heater that needs repairing in the primary. There is so much more we could be doing for our students, and this is what we're doing? We're gambling because we can't guarantee anything. Is, if the grant is maxed out, we don't even know what the lawyer's hourly rates are. We don't know anything of that. So instead of focusing on that, instead of focusing on the cafeteria where food is becoming harder to get by because of new regulations, this is the grant that we're pursuing right now instead of waiting? There are other schools pursuing this already. Why are we being the guinea pig? Let them do it. We can't afford it. We cannot afford this risk. If a school board, if a school district runs in the red, by law, they must close. We all know this. Are we willing to risk that? I'm not. There are too many kids counting on us in this area, and this is what we're going to do. We're going to risk that? Because if we lose, and we keep trying to fight it over and over and over again, I guarantee you, we're going to go in the red. And if that happens, the school closes. That is the law. If a school goes into the red, it is forced to close. I'm not willing to risk our school closing.
I make no apologies for my previous votes and stance on this issue. As an equal taxpayer of Livermore Falls and to the RSU 73 community, I do not apologize. I fully support and believe in the importance of this issue. As a parent of students who currently attend this district, I do not apologize for my vote. I do not apologize for believing in the protection, safety, and dignity of each and every child's well-being. Furthermore, for those who voted for me to be a voice for the community, they know what I stand on. There are many behind me who believe that this issue is important, and they want the safety and dignity of their children to be protected as outlined by policy ACDC. My vote stands.
Okay, Laura, go ahead with the roll call.
Okay, so we are voting to be policy ACDC as is.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Please.
No, please, no. Please, no.
Dawn Strout.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Danielle Brothers.
No.
Michelle.
Yes.
Ava.
Yes.
Sarah.
No.
Elaine.
I'm not breaking my oath of office and breaking the laws of the state of Maine. No.
Dawn Emmerich.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
And Carrie.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five.
Motion carries. Do our student representatives get a vote? Okay. I'll consider a motion to hire Steve Smith Trial Lawyers as our representative for the Human Rights Commission lawsuit. Dawn Strout. Sarah.
Yes, I was at the earlier meeting with this law firm, and they do not have a background in education. And it feels like at this critical moment, we need a law firm with a background in education.
Laura, can I get a roll call?
Yes. Dawn Emmerich.
Yes.
Tanya.
Yes.
Elaine.
No.
Sarah.
No.
Ava.
Yes.
Yes.
Holly.
Yes.
Amy.
Abstain.
Danielle.
Abstain.
Dawn Strout.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jody.
Yes.
And Carrie.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'll accept a motion to enter into executive session to get legal advice regarding the Human Rights Commission lawsuit. All those in favor?
No.
All those opposed?
Motion carries. We're going to head into the bathroom. Point of origin.
This law firm that we just agreed to hire, we were given the name, and that's pretty Is there any credentials that the public should be aware of that is why we felt so strongly to hire them?
As Scott said, where the motion was to go into executive session, not about the attorney. We already voted on the attorney, so.
To discuss the attorney, though.
No, we're going to meet with the attorney.
Okay. Didn't ask my question, though.
You weren't on the board the last time you met with the attorney, and this, or what the credentials were.
But as a board member, shouldn't I have been informed of their credentials? Because you just said that this grant was to cover, and you just found out this morning. I was on the board this morning.
Good point.
What do you think about me, the attorney?
He's refusing to.
Yeah, you can ask him that question. He's just saying. Yeah. You can ask him that question.
Put us back at 7:55 please. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So who?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone.